According to being President, I will bring this meeting. This meeting will come to order. For people which are just walking in now, there's plenty of seats over here. I would like to appoint the tellers. Carla Christensen, Sue Parity, Wendy Fossa, Terry Mansfield, Suzanne Lynch, Tina Lane, Robert Fitzgibbon, and Jim O'Donnell. Are there any objections to those tellers? So appointed. We have Margaret Ferranti out front politicking, so she will be in to see us. Can everybody stand up? And shake the hands of the persons beside you and behind you and say good evening. If you are a non-voter or a visitor, I would please ask that you sit over in this section here. So all non-voters and visitors, please sit over here. Exceptions to the rule is Brendan Zabricki, Town Administrator, Greg Corbo, Town Counsel, Ginny Intel, Town Accountant, members of the Manchester Essex School Committee, the School Superintendent, and we have the Cricket Reporter over here as well. People who are not registered voters may speak with the consent of the majority of the meeting. If you wish someone to speak, stay with the leave of the meeting. I will allow to speak if there is an objection. If there is an objection, the vote of the meeting will rule majority rolls. Regional School Superintendent has the right to speak even if they are not a registered Remind everyone that smoking is prohibited in school and on school grounds, but we have enough fire department here tonight. Can we all salute the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. I'd like to have a moment of silence for town officials that have passed since the last town meeting. Gloria Story, Dorothea Persoudy, and Phyllis Addison. And now, if you would, please take your seats unless you are a town official or appointed to a town board or a town employee. I do this every town meeting because Essex works on the support and effort of everybody in town. And the people that are standing are the people that really make this community work, and I'd like to have a round of applause for them. Please be seated. As we start, I'd like to mention that we have some new roles in town. We now have Pamela Thorne, right here, as our new Town Clerk. Jeff Sulard now is our Treasurer and Collector. And Ginny Intel is our Town Accountant. Town Meeting Procedures. Does everyone have a copy of Town Meeting Procedures, which is the yellow sheet, this sheet? They were being passed out in front.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
If you will guide us, we'd like to make the presentation.
Okay. Lisa?
Hi, Lisa O'Donnell. Speaking of people who have given back to the town, this man right here, 35 years. Thank you. We have a plaque here to present to our Mr. Moderator, and I just want to read to you the years of his service, so you understand how much he's given to this town, and it's in tiny little writing. Planning Board, 1983 to 1993, 10 years. Selectmen, 1993 to 2005, 12 years. Conomo Point Commissioner, 1993 to 2005, 12 years. School Regionalization Committee, 1999 to 2000. Conomo Point Planning Committee, 2006 to 2010, which felt like 12 years. Town Moderator, 2010 to 2018. And this is presented at Annual Town Meeting, May 7, 2018, which is going to be his last Town Moderator meeting.
Yes, we've got a car, 399 PM 5. It's blocking the driveway. Whoever's car that is, can they please move it? And I would like to say that I truly appreciate the opportunity to serve this town. After listening to what Lisa said, I'm going, did I have any time to do anything else? But I want to thank you for allowing me to be part of this community. Back to the mundane. To speak at the meeting, unless you are physically unable to do so, a voter should rise and get in line with others behind the designated microphone or microphones. There's one here, there's one here, and I think we've got one in the back, two in the A portable mic, a portable microphone is available should a voter cannot physically be unable to get to one of our microphones. Each voter, each time a voter is recognized at the meeting, the voter should state their name and street address. All motions must be made in writing and handed to me after the motion is made. Discussion must be only on the question being considered and confined to the issues. In this form, it is encouraged to have full and open discussion on the issue being debated. Debate must be respectful to those with differing viewpoints, and the moderator will have zero tolerance that includes slurs or motives or character. All questions should be addressed to and through the moderator. Reconsideration can be moved by anyone voting per time meeting time. Two-thirds is required by town bylaw for reconsideration. Reconsideration can only be moved once by town bylaw. If business is not complete in one evening, reconsideration can be moved in subsequent evening. No action can be presumed to be final until the meeting is dissolved. Speaking time. Without first obtaining the leave of the meeting, no person shall speak more than twice on any question except a corrected mistake or misstatement. And no person shall speak more than five minutes at any one time without again being recognized by the moderator. I'll take a motion to move, I'll take a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. We'll consider the articles.
Aye, Lisa O'Donnell. Move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a surveyor of bark and lumber.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 2.
Aye, Andrew C. Spiny. Move that the town receive the reports of the town officials, boards, and committees contained in the annual town report.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Nope? What? You've got another one. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 3.
Aye, David Dohm. Move the town vote to approve the wage and salary scale for the year 2019 in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. I recognize.
Betsy Ridge-Madson, 22 Saginaw Road. I'd like to move that Article 15 be considered before Article 14.
Betsy, are you also asking that we consider Article 15 now?
No.
Okay, so the motion, is there a second to that motion? The motion is to consider Article 15 before Article 14, but the articles be kept in current order.
We organized the warrant as it is with Article 14 to discuss the acquisition of land, and then Article 15 has been put after 14 to indicate that we're planning the funding money for the property that's in question in Article 14. So it seemed appropriate and logical to us to have the discussion about the property before having the discussion about funding a construction project on that property.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion fails. Article 4.
Aye, David Dohm. Move that the town, whoops, fixes salary compensation to each of the elected officers of the town as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended for fiscal year 2019 in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board Report.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 5.
Aye, Lisa O'Donnell. Move that the town vote to transfer from the town's Septic Betterment Fund, the sum of $26,194, for the purpose of making necessary payments to the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust during fiscal year 2019 in accordance with the terms of repayment for community septic management program loan funds.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Any discussion?
This is a pass-through program where the town acquires loans to help people with their septic bills, and so this is just money that we collect from residents who are in that program, and we repay it. It's pass-through.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 6.
Aye, Michelle Dyer. Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $6,860,944 as follows. Raise by taxation the sum of $773,775 for debt repayment, principal and interest. Transfer from the cemetery sale of lots fund, the sum of $6,600 to the cemetery budget. Transfer from the cemetery lot care fund, the sum of $8,861 to the cemetery budget. Transfer from the cemetery perpetual care fund, the sum of $6,600 to the cemetery budget. Transfer from the wetlands protection fund, the sum of $4,000 to the Conservation Commission budget. Transfer from the town technology fund, the sum of $12,000 to the town technology budget. Transfer from the ambulance fund, the sum of $50,000 to the ambulance budget. Transfer from free cash, the sum of $200,000 to the health insurance budget. Raise by taxation the sum of $5,799,108 to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the town according to the remaining budget items as indicated in the Finance Committee report, and to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within a department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second? As part of this article, I ask Michelle also to discuss all the financial articles which are on the warrant. So as part of her discussion, she's going to do that as well.
Yes, hi, I'm Michelle Dyer. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee, and collectively, the Finance Committee since about September of last year has been analyzing and reviewing the draft budget until we reach this final budget. Just to give you an insight into the process, we have assigned a liaison for the committee to meet with each of the town department heads, and we discuss line by line their budgets, ask questions, validate, reduce in many cases, most cases, and then come to a final budget in partnership with the town staff. So from that budget comes the town, sorry, the Annual Town Meeting warrant, and each of the financial articles correspond to that budget. So we have indeed reviewed, validated, and unanimously approved each of the monetary articles that are in this regardless of who reads them.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Majority rolls. The folks that are standing on the wall here, there are some seats here, there's some seats over here. I would prefer you not be standing in case we have a standing count, so if you can find a seat, I would appreciate it.
Aye, Scott Dewitt. Move that the town vote to transfer from the Sewer Enterprise Free Cash, the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of funding the City of Gloucester contract sewer usage line item in the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the remainder of fiscal year 2018.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Article 8.
Aye, Scott Dewitt. Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,074,351 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund budget as follows. Debt repayment, principal and interest, the sum of $900,730 from sewer betterments and the sum of $350,284 to be raised by taxation. And funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the sewer department, $796,337 from departmental receipts, and the sum of $27,000 from Sewer Enterprise Free Cash, all as indicated in the Finance Committee report, and to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within the sewer department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Article 9.
Aye, Scott Dewitt. Move that Article 9 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 10.
Aye, Scott Dewitt. Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $768,058 for the Water Enterprise Fund budget as follows. Debt repayment, principal and interest, the sum of $12,999 from water betterments, and the sum of $33,580 from departmental receipts, and funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the water department, $721,479 from departmental receipts, all as indicated in the Finance Committee report, and to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within the water department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 11.
Aye, Scott Dewitt. Move that the town vote to transfer from the Cemetery Lot Care Fund, the sum of $14,000 for the purpose of creating new maps for the town's cemetery properties, for the purpose of purchasing a new computer and related equipment for the cemetery department, and for purchasing and installing new computer software for the cemetery department, and all costs incidental and related thereto.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Article 12.
Aye, and Cameron. Move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,836,479 to fund the town's assessment from the Manchester Essex Regional School District, said sum to be calculated solely in accordance with the agreement between the towns of Essex and Manchester by the Sea, Massachusetts, with respect to the formation of a regional school district, as most recently amended by invoking and approving the provision found in Paragraph 4 of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 71, Section 16B, allowing district members to reallocate the sum of their required local contributions to the district in accordance with the regional agreement for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Do I, I was gonna take the opportunity, I got a mic.
Go for it.
Page 1. You all should have received this in the mail, so, and there were copies here as well, so I'm gonna try to just focus on what matters. The Manchester Essex Regional School District continues to provide an excellent education at a reasonable cost. For the past several years, the school committee has sought to maintain educational quality while remaining within the levy limit for the two towns. Our fiscal year 19 budget reflects that commitment. Our spending increases totaled 3.18% in spite of a drastic increase in healthcare costs last year and this. We have implemented a number of cost-saving measures to close our budget gap, including not hiring new staff to replace retiring teachers. Our per pupil cost is just over $16,000, the lowest on Cape Ann and lower than average among the Commonwealth's high-performing districts. Our teacher salaries remain in the middle of the pack. We are able to really achieve these numbers through sound fiscal management. Thank you Pam Bowden and Javi Urbis for your careful stewardship of the district. We also want to thank the Boards of Selectmen and Finance Committees for working collaboratively with the district throughout the year as we seek to balance expenditures and educational quality. While our budget work is daunting, you should feel proud of the work happening in our schools. Some highlights. Manchester Essex was named ninth in Boston Magazine's Best Schools Edition, was recognized as a commendation school by the Massachusetts Department of Education, and ranked among the world's best schools on the PISA Assessment. That's the Program for International Assessment. That's a big deal. These are impressive results and reflect the hard work and commitment of our faculty and staff. Thanks to them for all that they do for our kids. And it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so if you know a teacher, thank a teacher this week. We can seek, we seek continual improvement to that end. We systematically examine the health of our existing academic, sports, and special education programs. We are also implementing Yale's Ruler Program, which focuses on social-emotional health. You can learn more about that work by coming to one of our meetings or visiting our website. On May 30, the district will host an informational session at the Memorial School in Manchester, highlighting our progress towards replacement of that building. Those meetings will be at 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM. We welcome all residents to come and learn more about that project, and I extend a personal invitation to all Essex residents to come tour that building and get a real sense of the need of that facility. While much attention is focused on Memorial School, please note that the district is committed to maintaining this elementary school. This year, we availed ourselves of a $250,000 green grant to replace the lighting at Essex Elementary, and will continue to leverage access to this grant program to implement other improvements, such as systems controls, which I think is on our agenda this year. As always, thank you for continuing to support our school district and its important work.
My name is Greg Cooper, Essex Reach Road. One thing that's not really listed on this documentation is that this is the elimination of the late bus, which serves only Essex. So while Manchester unanimously approved this budget, they're not impacted by it. Only Essex is impacted by this. So anyone with an elementary school or middle school child or high school child who is strongly encouraged to participate in after-school activities, you're going to be driving to Manchester again, 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 and again, because they are eliminating in this budget the late bus. So I'm not sure about you, but that doesn't feel like an equal budget proposal. They're not impacted in Manchester, we are. So just keep that in mind. If you like driving all the way to Manchester, because your kids are actively involved in things like sports or after-school activities, or you want to do a project which they all have to do, then get ready, because you're going to be driving across a lot. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Okay. Can I just answer that, or is that...
Is your second portion to speak? Sure.
Sure. I don't even, sure. We're still working on the budget, and so we're trying to get that back, but it will not be back, I think, as it is now, which is two runs after school. It'll probably be one run, and it'll be more targeted. So I think right now, it comes to the elementary school and maybe stops some other places that are not on the route, but it will just come to Essex Elementary, if we can get it. So we're still working on the budget, we're still trying to see some numbers solidify, and we're trying. We get it. I've had four kids in the district. I know, I had them, I was working as well. So we're trying to get it back. And if it comes to a late bus or a teacher, we're gonna pick a teacher. So that's, we're trying.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Majority rolls. Article 13.
Aye, Lisa O'Donnell. Move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $323,548 to pay the town's share of the operating and capital costs of the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Lisa, how many... Lisa, how many students do we have going there? We have twenty students there. Opposed? In unanimous. Article fourteen. Andy, hold on a second. Jimmy, can you find a seat, please? And the folks over here, please find a seat. I've recognized Andy, but it, okay? Thank you.
I, Andrew C. Spinney, move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase for general municipal purposes, which purposes may include a fire station, the fee symbol, or other interests in certain real property, and any buildings or improvements thereon, and any related assets located at fifty-five Main Street being shown in Assessor's Map one twenty-eight, Lot one sixty-six, and described in the deed recorded in the Essex South Registry of Deeds in Book one five oh one six, page one twenty-five, and to transfer from the sale of the real estate fund the sum of 2.4 million for such acquisition, and to further authorize the Selectmen to grant or accept any temporary or permanent easements across said property and/or any abutting property, and further to authorize the Selectmen to execute any and all instruments necessary to effigate the purposes of this vote.
Is there a second?
Fifty-five Main Street is perfect for a fire station. It has all the qualities the department needs. It's flat, it's on high ground, it's centrally located for the best possible response times to all areas of the town, and it's large enough for the needs of the department today and into the future. These attributes will allow us to design and plan the site and station to meet our collective goals. These plans could include municipal parking, green space, continued access to the stairs to the lower parking lot, and also to the additional municipal parking spaces below. The purchase of this property is best way to address the fact that as a town, we are land poor, and that this purchase will serve to satisfy the needs of both the fire department and the police department, so that both groups finally get the space they need to operate efficiently and safely, so as to protect their staff and equipment, and in turn us the taxpayers. During the discussions you will hear in this article, people will point out issues they have with this purchase. Please reconsider these issues carefully and to not confuse the fact or conjecture. This is not a perfect scenario, but it's the best scenario, and this is it. Please keep the big picture in mind about what is best for our department and the town overall. Please also remember that this is, this was the support of the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Town Building Committee, and these are the groups who have spent countless hours studying the issues and options and have the associated costs. The people on these committees bring both diverse and relevant professional backgrounds to the process. Please give their recommendations their due weight, they are fellow taxpayers, and they are charged with finding the best solution for the town. Speaking as a businessman, this combination of land acquisition and new fire station represents the best and most advantageous option for the town. I hope you see this also.
Chief. Okay. Lisa, actually, there was someone in the back that wanted, yes. You can come up front. Someone trying to tell you something?
Hello? Yeah. Thank you. So Paul Penory, fifty-seven Grove Street. Before voting, I wanted to move to request that Articles fourteen and fifteen be done on a secret ballot.
Okay. It is, it is debatable. Does anyone wish to speak on the motion? Someone can speak whether or not a secret ballot is needed or not.
I will speak, and I will ask folks not to request a secret ballot. I don't think it's necessary, this is an open meeting, and we can all stand behind what we want to vote for. That said, this requires twenty percent of people on the floor to stand and request a secret ballot.
Thank you, Lisa. Jack.
Jack Gale, Pond Street. I'm very much in favor of having a paper ballot for this vote. It takes a little longer, but we'll have an accurate count, and we can all vote our consciences. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'm gonna try to do this with a voice vote first. All those in favor of a secret ballot, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Can I have the tellers come up, please? All those in favor of a secret ballot, please stand.
Are all our tellers up here? Please, don't move. Until we tell you to sit down, don't move. All right, count.
What do you got? Which one was going back? I'm gonna declare twenty percent. We needed a hundred and five votes. Just with these three sections, we've got a hundred and ninety-one. So. The first three are. And that's what I'm using to use my, make my determination. Okay, Lisa, let's go.
Lisa O'Donnell. Since the Town Building Committee was appointed in two thousand and nine, the town has been investigating its options for public safety buildings and potential properties for one or both departments. Since that time, town officials and committees have weighed the pros and cons of several locations in town. This lengthy study has been undertaken by your fellow residents, who serve on various boards and committees over the past nine years. The site of the Village Restaurant has always been at the top of our list as the most advantageous site, due to its size, high elevation, large level lot, and central location in town, as well as providing parking for first responders, potential for continued municipal parking, ideal access to main routes in town for first responders, and room for future expansion if necessary. In past discussions with the owners of the Village Restaurant property about potentially purchasing the property, we always heard that the property was not for sale, so we continued to explore other options. In February of this year, the owners indicated that their circumstances had changed, and that they would be interested in meeting with the town officials to discuss a possible sale. Shortly thereafter, Selectman Andrew Spinney, Town Administrator Brennan Zuberke, and the owners, along with legal counsel from both sides, met to discuss the details of a potential agreement. At that time, the owners indicated that they had established a price of 2.4 million dollars based on a professional appraisal of the combined value of the real estate and the business assets. The owners offered to provide a copy of this appraisal to the town. After several lengthy negotiations in late February, the parties agreed to enter into a non-binding letter of intent, allowing the town to conduct due diligence, such as property appraisal work, title work, and environmental review, before deciding whether to pursue the transaction. An important feature of this agreement was that the town's due diligence be done in a confidential manner, so as not to harm the owner's ongoing business, which would give them the flexibility to set their own timeline if the town does not purchase the property. As promised, the owners provided us with a detailed appraisal of both the real estate and business assets. Regarding the business assets, the information provided included an appraisal opinion from a highly qualified and well-established appraiser of restaurant business assets, accompanied by significant detail regarding the income and expenses and profits and losses of the business. By late March, the town completed its due diligence, consisting of our own professional appraisal work, title work, and environmental evaluation. No title defects were found, and the environmental evaluation did not suggest any special level of risk. Further, members of the three policy groups that were asked to consider this information, the Finance Committee, the Town Building Committee, and the Selectmen unanimously agreed that the 2.4 million appraisal price reasonably reflects the value of the assets being acquired by the town. With the town's due diligence completed and all conditions met, the Selectmen, with the full support of the Finance Committee and the Town Building Committee, signed a purchase and sale agreement that is expressly contingent upon town meeting approval, and that contains no penalties or liabilities for the town. From the first engagement with the seller, town officials have developed a negotiating position relative to the acquisition of this property. The need to protect this position continues now and may continue in the future until things are settled. But as this position requires protection for as long as it takes to complete the sale, should town meeting vote in favor of the purchase this evening. Notwithstanding a need to keep some of the details of our strategy and reasoning confidential, as well as documents involved in the negotiation, we have endeavored to provide the public with as much information as possible, so that voters can make an informed decision. During the month of April, town officials conducted three public forums regarding this potential purchase, including comparison to the other leading options that have been under study since two thousand and nine. In addition to these public forums, we have discussed the matter with many residents and have addressed questions and concerns that have been raised on social media. Although we have endeavored to be as transparent as possible about our reasons for recommending that you approve this purchase, we realize that many of you feel disadvantaged by the fact that we have not disclosed the appraiser's opinion of value or the facts or figures upon which those opinions are based. While we continue to believe that it will be detrimental to the town if many of the details supporting our recommendation are released to the public, we understand that the voters present here tonight need additional information to be able to make an informed decision. Michelle?
Chief was first.
So we fully understand the need to reassure the voters that the purchase price is reasonable, and that the town would be getting a reasonably, a properly valued asset. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen has authorized me to convey the following facts and figures to the town meeting members assembled here tonight. While disclosing some of this information may compromise our negotiating position in the future, we believe the need to provide voters with this information outweighs the risk to our position. The seller's real estate appraisal came in at 1.4 million dollars, and the town's independent appraisal matched that figure exactly. The seller's business appraisal came in just over 1 million dollars, and the town appraisers' review of that appraisal came in at 700,000 dollars. Each appraiser placed emphasis on different methods of assessment and associated factors, leading to the difference between the two valuations. Appraisals of private businesses that are a going concern involve a higher degree of discretion and judgment on the part of the appraiser than real estate appraisals. And for this reason, persons familiar with the industry have informed us that this difference is within an acceptable range of variation, and that the method of valuation is also a judgment of the appraiser and his or her understanding of the business under review. Business professionals on the Finance Committee and on the Town Building Committee have run their own independent analyses of value, using several different methods, to establish an acceptable range for the value of the business. The town's figure and the seller's figure are within that range of reasonable value. We did engage the seller in further negotiations after receipt of the opinion from the town's appraisal, but they indicated they were not willing to reduce their price based on the business appraisal, which was performed by one of the most well-respected restaurant appraisers in New England. The three policy boards have unanimously voted to recommend this purchase. We all truly believe that this price reasonably reflects the fair market value of the assets we are purchasing, and that the town will not be able to obtain a comparable property or even one remotely as advantageous if this transaction were to fall through. We therefore recommend that you vote in favor of this article. And I'd just like to add that there's been a lot of discussion about the appropriateness of this price. And at the end of the day, a price is something the seller is willing to sell for, and they can reasonably expect from the next buyer to come along. Inclusive of the business assets, which of course we would not continue to operate, which we would prefer not to buy, but unfortunately, that's not an option in this case, this is still the lowest-priced option for what actually is the most attractive parcel of land for this project. For that reason, the Finance Committee was unanimously in support of this, and we hope you would be too.
Chief.
Dan Doucette, John Wise Avenue. It's nice to see so many people here. I appreciate the people who came out to the public forums, and also took part in the tours at our station. I think those who came I think those who came in got a lot of good information and found it very enlightening. I don't think we need to have an issue like this every town meeting to get everybody here. Hopefully next year you'll all still be here, and this issue will be behind us. The Town Building Committee, which I am a member, has been in place for nine years and consists of a group of professionals that includes several architects, a structural engineer, a commercial real estate executive, a criminal justice professor, the Chair of the Planning Board, the Police Chief, and myself. I'm sorry if I'm repeating some of the information. I didn't talk to their speechwriters before I got here, but I can say without most confidence that during this committee's existence, we explored and researched many options, including the current site, other town-owned land, and several private owned properties, including the Village. We also spoke to some other landowners who at that time also declined to engage with us about selling their property. At no one time were any of these individuals ever harassed or badgered. Our goal throughout was to find a financially responsible solution to the town public safety building needs. Article 14 can provide us with that answer, and it's of crucial importance to the Town of Essex as well as the Essex Fire Department and Police Departments. If this article is approved, it would allow the town to begin to address the facility needs of both departments, providing the necessary safe working environments that the employees of these departments deserve. The proposed site at 55 Main Street is of sufficient size to allow construction of a fire station that will accommodate the needs of the Fire Department today and into the future. The site is centrally located, on high ground, unaffected by tidal flooding, provides sufficient parking for first responders, and has access to main roads. Having a central location is important to an on-call responder who must travel from their homes and businesses in their personal vehicles to take the required apparatus to the emergency scene. This site also allows some potential for municipal parking at the Main Street elevation, as well as the area that abuts the current municipal lot at the rear of the station. This article is unanimously supported by the Board of Fire Engineers and by a majority of the members of the Fire Department at their last meeting. I encourage you to support this article. Thank you for your time.
Any further discussion? Ginny.
I'm Ginny Antel. I'm your Town Accountant, your employee. I'd really like to see this pass. Essex is in a good financial situation. We have balanced budgets. Our tax rate is what it is. However, we have a double A bond rating. In 2003, the town didn't even have a bond rating. We then became in 2004 with our sewer project, we were an A stable. 2010, I refunded some debt for the town, saved the town a lot of money. We became a double A. Your employees, we're your employees, and we're doing the best we can every day to find and fund your needs. The Fire Department is simply asking for the tools to do their job. And I realize if you've never called an ambulance, you've never needed a fireman, they're almost invisible. But we have men who are leaving their jobs, losing their family income to protect ours. I urge you to vote for this, please.
Is that on?
Hello?
Hello.
I wondered if you could talk a little bit about the tax-
Can I have your name and address, please?
Sorry, I'm Lucy Steiner. I live at 9 Harlow Street. I was wondering if you could talk about the tax income that we're losing and what's gonna happen to the Fire Department and the Police Department that's there now.
Thank you for asking. So, the tax income that we get from that property at the moment is around $15,000 a year. The site is actually still attractive when you factor in the loss of that income over the life of the building. And if you want some exact numbers, so $15,000 a year, loss of income versus if we went with the Memorial Park option, which is the option of two buildings, which is the most likely Plan B. That would cost us an incremental $55,555 a year. So that's an incremental increase cost of $40,555,000 a year even when you factor in the loss of tax income. If you would build on the existing site, which by the way, none of the boards support because it's just so much more expensive than any of the other options, but as a point of comparison, that would cost an incremental $88,460 a year, which means when you factor in the loss of tax income, that's $73,640 a year more expensive. So, excellent question, but yes, we have considered that in the total evaluation of the cost.
Hi, Nak Crosby, 35 Addison Street, Chair of the Historical Commission and Town Building Committee Member and Architect. So last year, I joined the building, with the urging of the Historical Commission, I joined the Building Committee in opposition to the Memorial Park site. The town was just completing a remarkable renovation of the Town Hall and Library, restoring it to its initial splendor. The Town Hall will be receiving an award for rehabilitation and restoration at the Massachusetts Historical Commission Annual Preservation Award Ceremony next week. As Lisa can attest, my opposition to the Memorial Park site has never receded. However, my support for a functioning and safe fire and police station continues to push for developing the best solution of our available options. Earlier this year, the Building Committee presented two options for the site, for the fire station and the police station. One was the Memorial Park site next to the Town Hall, and the other was to demolish and reconstruct the existing facility on the existing site. Both sites had compromises. The Memorial Park site lost parkland, encroached upon the ball fields, and blocked views from the street and residents, and had a complex site conditions. The second to demolish and rebuild was disruptive and extremely expensive in comparison. At the end of that contentious meeting, we asked for your help in opening up other opportunities. The request was met by the Ricky's when they decided to offer the Village Restaurant as an alternative site for the fire station. Although saddened by the loss of the community landmark, this site is the ideal location for the fire station. It has a flat ground and is centrally located on the north side of the causeway. From an architectural and building perspective, it has many other advantages. In addition to what is outlined in the handout, the fire station would occupy the same relative footprint as the restaurant, or be set back slightly to allow for the church to have more prominence on the corner. Although larger than the church itself, it would not be any more competitive than the restaurant currently is. The yard in front of the truck doors would be generous and would allow for the trucks to pull out and engage the street safely, allowing clear visibility of the vehicles on the road and the intersection, and pedestrians on the sidewalks, whether they be visitors to town or those attending church. The Village site offers an opportunity to build a fire station that will be least negative impact to the community with the most opportunities. At the next article, I will talk further on those items. Thank you.
Sally? Whoever.
Sally Rich, 16 Water Street. I just want to ask, and I think it's important to point out that when we vote on Article 14, if it passes, it's a done deal. So regardless of 15 passes or not, we still will own the Village property. So I just, some people have had that question to me earlier this evening when I was talking to various people, and I think people need to understand that when we vote Article 14, that if it passes, we own the Village. If 15 doesn't pass, we still own the Village. If the debt override doesn't pass on the ballot, we still own the Village. So I think people just need to be clear on that, whatever your feeling is about supporting this endeavor. Thank you.
My turn. Okay, I'm Vincent Caravella. I live at 3436 Main Street, which is about six doors up from the property we're talking about. Or with a good, with a rock in your hand and a good right fielder's arm, you could probably hit the parking lot. I accept all the argument by the select people for the property. It's a perfect spot for the fire station. However, we're taking off the table a large piece of property for tax. Now I know they say, well, it's about $40,000 a year, and it's been raised that they could collect rent from the two stores that are there, possibly. However, when you remove a off-street parking spot and foot traffic that a restaurant brings, the rent should come down. So you're not going to be collecting the $40,000. Also, with the economy turning around, more people are going out to eat, you will probably be collecting more of the food tax, which comes back to ask us. It's also been raised that if the boys are selling, and I hope they get all the money they can possibly get, they're gonna be missed. But another restaurant comes in, they do their thing, and the town continues to collect. If a developer comes in, I don't see a problem with that. All right? They build a tall building, what, three stories high? My place is almost four stories high. The place across the street, the Congo Church, is pretty high, too. And I'll be one of the first in line to buy one of those condos. The cash might, I'll cash my piggy bank in, and I'll be happy to stay in Essex. So there's that. There are also between 40 and 60 people employed there, and what happens to them? This is a landmark. People come to eat at the Village. People have already said, we've heard the argument, well, they'll eat somewhere else. They'll eat somewhere else the first time, then they'll go to another town. So you're losing traffic into town. It's a draw. If there's another restaurant, as I said, it'll continue to draw, and it may even operate under the same name. But I sincerely wish people would consider that. I've never believed in removing money off the table when you've got income generating. Thank you.
Rob?
Can I just, Mr. Modern, may I correct a factual misstatement there?
I'm recognizing Rob. Excuse me? I'll let you speak after Rob. If you want to speak, come to one of the microphones. I see you. That's why I don't want people standing all around, because I can't tell who's at the microphone and who's not. Rob?
Hi everyone, Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street. In these cynical times, opportunity often breeds distrust. What's the catch? Who benefits? That kind of stuff. As you guys, many of you are aware, there has been a Building Committee that has existed for, I think formally nine years, informally for over a decade, that has literally looked at practically every single piece of property in the Town of Essex for a possible or potential location for emergency services building. This has been a long process, and there are several considerations that we have to take into account. So for example, you can't put, if our emergency services building all the way at the Manchester border, because it also has to serve townspeople who live near the Ipswich border. This is why a centralized location is really key. Doing nothing is not an option. If you guys have been sort of following, you know, our town expenses recently, you will have noticed that we've had unplanned costs to repair the building. The current emergency services building was built during the Korean War, like, 68 years ago. It is built in an era where the fire trucks were a lot smaller, and in fact, we've actually had to smash the entranceway and make it higher to fit the fire truck in. It has asbestos, it needs to be refurbished, and the reason I say that doing nothing is not an option is because unless you guys want to spend more money on repairs in upcoming years, more money on OSHA fines, which we expect to start to kick in in 2019, and also keep our first responders in a building that is substandard, and I worry frankly about their morale, it just to me does not seem like a good, a good choice. This is the most, and I'm speaking as a member of the Finance Committee here, this is the most fiscally prudent and least risky option. And I refer also to the research that we've done on the sales tax and on the, you know, the regular property tax. I gotta say, I mean, this is literally a great opportunity. Wow. I know people are worried about the loss, the civic character of the town by losing such an icon as the Village. And look, I love the lobster rolls, I love the bar, it's been amazing. Unfortunately, times change, towns change, this is what happens. This is an opportunity. Think of it not as a downside, but as an upside. This could be an amazing civic center for the town. And we should keep that in mind, because it's not necessarily going to be something negative, it could be something very, very positive. And I just want to say that, like, look, this is a great, great, great opportunity. We should seize it. Thank you.
Michelle, you wish to speak to some numbers?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that the loss of tax revenue is $15,000 a year, not $40,000. So just to be clear, the cost of the debt service annually will far outshadow any loss of tax income associated with the change of use of this property. Looking at the restaurant tax is also a great, great point. So this year, for restaurant revenue, we budgeted $200,000 for revenue, and we've had some, we've had several restaurants change hands, we've had the loss of, what's it called? Fortune Palace, yes. I don't know why I cannot remember the name of that. And we've actually, as of the end of last month, we exceeded our revenue expectation even with the loss of that restaurant. We've taken in $201,000. So if pass is precedent, people will go to one of the many other fine establishments. I love the Village, I love the bar, but I also like C.K. Pearl, and the Marlin, and the Boathouse, and all these other wonderful restaurants we have in town.
Thank you. Terry, I want to let Dawn speak first. Dawn?
Dawn Burnham, 22 County Road. There's been a lot of emotion about this, and there's been a lot of anger. And from my point as a fireman's wife for 45 years, when I hear people say they have all the right equipment and they have all the right uniforms, why do they need a better building? Well, there are a lot of things that need to happen, and there's absolutely no room in that present building for it. My husband, for 45 years, has been going to accidents and bringing other people's blood and bodily fluids home to me and my children. And I have to wash his clothes, he's showering and using my towels, and this was long before we even were worried about what was happening when they were picking somebody who was bleeding up. This is absolutely not acceptable anymore. If we were a union fire station, they would be suing us for the inhumane way that these men are dealing with this facility. There is supposed to be a ventilation system in there, so that when they start those trucks, those men are not breathing in the fumes coming off of those engines. And I would like to think that a lot of you went down and saw that there is no room for that ventilation system. There is no room for them to even change their clothes if they wanted to and wash them in the machine that's there because they have no locker room facility. This is not a luxury. This is a matter of life and death, and I'm not trying to scare you. My husband, who was on the Fire Department for 45 years, three years ago had bladder cancer. He had massive surgery, he was on the table for 12 and a half hours, he lost 45 pounds in one month, and it's because he was out fighting- pounds in one month, and it's because he was out fighting fires when he was eighteen years old, before they had the appropriate equipment. We need to treat these people with the respect they deserve. On the federal level, they are now trying to pass a law that the federal government has to follow every fireman in this country, because the firemen have the highest cancer rate of any of these kind of jobs. And it's about time that we wake up and take them seriously and treat them, not just nicely, but give them the facility they deserve to work in.
Carrie?
To start, I want to say that my family and I appreciate the work of our fire department. They may have actually saved my life a few years ago when I had a heart attack. I don't think there are many here tonight that deny there's a need for a new or upgraded facility. I want to address their facility needs, but cannot support this approach. I don't believe that the town should be in the business of converting productive commercial property to municipal purposes, thereby eliminating the yearly income to the town and sixty jobs. The Riccys have built up a very successful restaurant business, which is a destination for many out-of-towners who spend their money in other Essex businesses as well. I don't believe that the business lost by closing the Village will automatically transfer to other Essex establishments. I understand Mark and Kevin's desire to retire. Let them sell it to another restaurant operator, because that is what it was appraised for and is clearly the highest and best use for the property. Since it appears the selectmen are prepared to spend two-point-four million for land, plus the demolition cost to remove the existing buildings, it appears we have at least two-point-five million plus or so budget that could be spent on property where the metal building would be acceptable without the aesthetic makeover that the selectmen have costed out at four-hundred thousand dollars. It is unfortunate that the secretive nature of this plan might have precluded owners of other parcels to come forward if they were aware the town would be willing to pay multiples of the assessed value. The Village site is far less than ideal. We will be shoehorning a large building on a small lot that is plagued by intense summer traffic, making it difficult for the responding firemen to get to the station. We don't even have an architect's rendering that would show how a building will fit on this site, what kind of variances, what kind of special permits would be required, and the parking provided. If a private party was proposing such a facility, a traffic study would surely have been required. But you don't need to be an engineer to know what the survey would say. Traffic will be terrible, and access to one-thirty-three will be severely impacted by summer traffic and activities. Having been involved in buying, developing, and managing real estate my entire life, I feel the threat, the threat of forty B for Cumberland Farms is not valid. Back to the two-point-four million purchase price, this is based on an appraisal of the property and its current status as a restaurant. Real estate professionals have stated that this price, the Village sale, would be the most expensive price per square foot in the history of Cape Anne. Why would a forty B developer or convenience store operator buy the most expensive piece of dirt on Cape Anne? Forty B developments are entitled to sewer connections as long as flow is available on the town's system. So a forty B project could go anywhere in town, as long as we have available capacity, which we do. Lastly, I was denied a copy of the purchase and sale agreement, which Brendan told me is confidential. Would any of you here tonight buy a property without reading the purchase and sale agreement? I won't, and we shouldn't tonight. What is in the purchase and sale agreement that our selectmen don't want us to see? I urge you to vote no and work together on a better solution, without losing a major business and jobs for sixty employees.
All right, well, excuse me, sir.
No, he's got the microphone.
Okay. Brian Healy, one-thirty-four Kenema Point Road. I didn't disagree with a single thing this lady said. I think we respect the contributions to our community that the police and the firemen, fire ladies, all do. My only issue has to do with the potential of the community. We've been growing... I'm sorry, I've only been here twenty-four years, so I'm still a newcomer, but I love it. But the redevelopment of the Town Hall reinforces that commitment, and the discussion tonight tries to suggest where we're going to place ourself within a broader community. My only comment that I would have is not that we don't need a new police station or a fire station, or we don't support the people that are supporting us. It is that the Village is such a central location. That intersection of twenty-two and one-thirty-three, as Essex develops, it could be a true center. And if you think that the fire station would be the center of that, then vote for this. I suggest that it would be better, with the three churches there, that there's more activity. You know, fire stations, I've designed some, they're big garage doors and really great equipment, but it isn't necessarily where people hang out. And I think that the intersection of twenty-two and one-thirty-three has the potential to be a really center of Essex as we grow over the next ten years, twenty years, whatever. And I think if it becomes a fire station, I'm afraid that we're going to take that away. That's my only suggestion. Thank you.
Lisa? Michelle?
I wanted to address a couple of different points. This opportunity with the Village addresses the most critical problem for both departments in that space. We don't have the space to serve the needs of both departments where we are. If we don't find additional property, and we've already explored, and we've addressed this, we've looked everywhere we can for appropriate properties, and this is the best property, the best location. And there is enough real estate there that it would be a fire station, there would be an opportunity for municipal parking, and there could be a little common area or something. That's part of what the design process would be. Without this space, we're going to have to start looking again at town-owned land, and as we've learned in the forums, all of those options are far less optimal than this one. This is the one that addresses the needs of both departments and the town the best. The town has in the past missed similar opportunities to purchase land, and that's why we're in the condition we are right now, while we're trying to operate two departments out of an area that's not sufficient for the fire department, although it can be refurbished for the police. I also want to address a concern that I've heard about how quickly this has happened, and can't we have more time to think about it, and can't we see designs for this property? Well, first of all, we can't pay an architect to develop renderings and designs of this property without owning it. We can't ask you for money to fund a study to look at designs on something we don't own. And the quicknesses happened, it came to light in February that we wanted to do this. This is a private real estate transaction, and we're a municipal body, and a municipal body works typically much slower. We meet twice a year to make decisions than a private entity does. We don't have the time to deliberate and think about this. We know it is exactly the site that the fire department needs, and it doesn't, it doesn't take a whole lot of study to know that we can fit that and several other uses onto that piece of property. The thing, the Town Building Committee and the Board of Selectmen have all looked at this, and we agree that it is the best option, it makes the most fiscal sense for the town. In the negotiations, it was important to keep the town safe from harm, and that's why we were in executive session and why we had these deliberations. But in all those steps, the three committees that I'm talking about have all been participatory, and we're all fellow residents, and we're working in the best interest of the town. And I guess I just want to conclude by saying that it's, the other options are not good. We're going to be looking back at town land, we looked at the Memorial Park, that was the next likely place. We would pay more money, and we would lose a park, and that just doesn't make sense fiscally. When you look at, we can buy a piece of property, we can get the space that we need for both departments. If the fire department is relocated, we would have the ability to refurbish and bring the existing station up to standards that the police could operate safely and securely out of that facility. And overall, at the end of the day, if we turn this opportunity down, we're still going to be scrambling for space, we're still going to be hard against it, and we have really nowhere else to go. We have a park, and we have a piece of a cemetery, and we've looked at other private lots, and there really isn't anything that meets what the fire department needs. This is it.
Point of information.
I... The rebuttal to my forty thousand dollar figure was fifteen thousand dollars. Now, are you telling me that a two million dollar piece of property is only paying fifteen thousand dollars a year in real estate tax?
The accountant can answer.
Really? And does that include the loss of the meal tax that we get, reimbursement from the state?
Can you answer? Town accountant?
Ginny Intel. So when the, when this Department of Revenue in the state sends us meals tax money, they send us in a lump sum. We're not privy to how much money in meals tax comes per restaurant. So unless we knew the exact sales of every single restaurant in town, we could guess. But I'll tell you right now, this meals tax revenue has gone wild. And when the new restaurant opens, when Periwinkles opens up again, and the Brew Pub opens up again, it's going to be okay. We've got to learn to trust. It's going to be fine. We've got a good budget, we've got low debt, and if we don't do this, it's going to cost us more later.
So there's, my question still is, are they paying fifteen thousand dollars a year for a two million dollar piece of property?
It's a nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar piece of property. That's...
Okay.
The real estate versus the business value.
Listen.
My name is John Philias, I'm at one-eighty Southern Avenue, and I'm a small business person, and I'd like to offer my opinion. Everybody's confused about why we're paying so much money for this business. The property value and its taxation is one thing. What those guys make in a year in money is another thing. Those are their assets. Nobody in their right mind is going to open up their books and tell the whole town how much money they make. So that's why you can't see it. So that shouldn't even be an argument in this. If we want this land, that's what it costs. Once it's gone, it's gone. This town is notorious, from what I've told, of turning things down because they thought it was going to be too much money, and it comes back to bite them in the ass, like the sewer system. There's a number of them. And I'm not sure what everybody's so afraid of. This is a deal, it's a business deal. Everybody showed you the numbers. The numbers make sense. Why do you want to spend one and a half or two million dollars more on a shitty location?
Dominic Olivo, two Southern. Unfortunately, I do have to start by saying I support our fire department and our police department. Just because you may have a question about this deal doesn't mean you suddenly don't like firefighters or don't like the police, as is being portrayed. So I'll start there. Next, I just had a couple, you know, questions or thoughts. At the start, we talked about facts, right? That it made more sense to look at facts, not on opinions. In the sheet you guys are giving us here, which I would assume should be fact, there's a couple of things that don't line up with the studies that we've had done for the memorial site specifically. I'd like to start, I guess, with the two things about parking here. Provide responder parking and municipal parking. It says none actually decreases available parking, but the plan says that it's a net increase of twenty-three parking spaces. So I was curious as to why that ended up here.
Ms. Moderator, could I answer the question?
Sure.
The proposed memorial site, I don't know if people had the individual, the opportunities to go down and see the cones that were placed. Those are the dimensions that came from the Reinhardt study in two thousand and twelve? Seventeen, I'm sorry, that's why I looked over there. If a building is placed on that piece of property, actually, street parking directly in front of that building from the existing fire station to the Town Hall driveway would not be allowed on either side, because we'd have to have access to turn left and right up Martin Street.
Doesn't the study show parking in front of the current police station, though? Two handicap spaces?
The spaces in the existing building would stay where they are.
Now, in front of the existing police station, in the study show...
It has one handicap spot.
Sir, we're discussing Article fourteen. Article fourteen is the purchase of property at where the Village Restaurant is today.
Yeah, I was just speaking to that prior. It seems these facts are leading us to a decision on Article fourteen.
Do you want to sit down?
I would not like to sit down yet.
I would ask that we keep our discussion to the motion. Our discussion isn't relative to other sites. Our discussion tonight is whether or not our community wants to put a fire station where the Village Restaurant is. So let's keep our conversation on that point. Thank you.
Okay. I just, I'm having a tough time figuring out why looking at other options are not involved with this option. Doesn't that make our decision based on other options?
We...
Isn't that what the comparison chart is for?
There have been multiple forums, and we're not discussing buying another site. What we're discussing is buying this site. And I'm not going to let our conversation or debate widen to the point that we will be here all night.
Understood. Then I just, one more question there. Can I ask one more question on the Village property plan?
Help yourself.
Okay. So I understand fifteen thousand, it's been in the family a long time and is appraised or assessed as such and taxed as such, makes sense. If the family is going to sell it, which is more, all the power to them, wouldn't that not go up closer to that two-point-four assessment, the tax rate on a two-point-four or two-ish million? And if so, how long before that price offsets the difference in building?
Is there an assessor in the building? Kirk, can you answer that question for the gentleman? Thank you.
Kirk Rollhelm, Western Avenue. The, so the question is on the assessment of the property?
Right, if the property were to sell at a rate closer to this two-point-four, would the assessment go up?
No, it would not go up, because part of the value of the property is in the building and the land, and the other part of the value of the property is in the business assets, which include like a liquor license and other things.
Kitchen equipment, sure.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's why. We don't tax those things. We don't tax...
No, I mean if it's sold, if the property's sold...
We have an answer, we have an answer to the question, and your answer was, not necessarily it will be based upon the value of the property, with the assessments. Thank you. Well done?
I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
Peter Hoare from one-eighty-two Southern Avenue. Obviously a member of the Essex Fire Department. Selectmen Spiny earlier mentioned that there was no perfect solution to this problem. However, I'm going to disagree. I think this is the perfect solution in terms of a physical location, from a practical standpoint of where a fire department ambulance service needs to be placed in Essex. My entire professional career has been involved in emergency EMS work. Twenty-seven years I've worked in Boston in the private ambulance business, as chief operating officer, a vice president. I know a little bit about emergency... I know a little bit about emergency services. And where this site is located is ideal for emergency response, particularly in a town like this where we are a call department, people are coming from all, all areas to get the apparatus. A friend of mine, as I was talking to, this week about the issue, mentioned if there's other sites, just, and it's, say it's four minutes away, does that really matter? And I go, yeah, it does. You know, fire doubles in size every minute, brain death occurs at six minutes or starts to occur. So seconds count. I think you all know that. So I looked at the various options. I think this is, though I'm not a finance expert, I think this is fiscally responsible of the three, best choice of the three. And, you know, you voted for these folks to sit on these committees and the selectmen. You know, if you don't like their process, I hope to see your name on the ballot next time. All right?
Mr. Neal?
Good evening. My name is Ed Neal. For those of you who don't know me, I've lived at 15 Western Ave since 1972, and I've run my transmission business there since 1978. I served on the fire department for about 10 years. I was an EMT for four. I also served on the Board of Selectmen for three years, Board of Health for three years, and the Regional School Committee for three years. I have more than a passing knowledge of how our town government is supposed to work, and I know what's involved in serving in Essex as a fireman and EMT. My family experienced all those same things that Don was talking about earlier. But I am here to stand before you tonight to tell you that you can vote against this without being against the firemen. I cannot support this proposal either. At best, I want to address those needs. I just don't think this is the right solution. At best, this proposal is premature. Until recently, the focus has been on rebuilding or building new on town-owned land. I believe that at some point, some superficial verbal survey was done of privately-held land that the owners might be willing to sell. Apparently, no one wanted to sell, but we don't know what the compensation was offered. Now the rickies do. A real estate professional has opined on Facebook that at 2.4 million, the 1.3 acre village property would constitute the most expensive real estate purchase per square foot in the history of Cape Town. As a restaurant, it is worth that amount. It just isn't worth that for our purpose of citing a public safety building. The Selectmen Commission is a consultant to evaluate the options of construction on town land, and those minimal engineering design reports are available for review on the town's website. For this Village proposal, however, no such professional analysis is available. Without architects' drawings, it's difficult to know what is actually being proposed. And that's the biggest problem with this whole issue. We know very little about this Village proposal, and all the evidence indicates that that is no accident. After this deal became public, I sent the Selectmen on April 6th a FOIA request demanding that the executive session minutes of meetings where the Selectmen discussed this issue be released and posted. By their own admission, they discussed this matter at 10 meetings between October in '17 and March of '18. Each time they entered executive session, Chairman O'Donnell stated that public discussion of these matters would be detrimental to the town's bargaining and negotiation strategy. In my April 1 request, I stated that since it appeared that the Selectmen had agreed to pay approximately two and a half times the assessed value of the property, that the negotiation was over and the reason for secrecy had expired. On April 26, I received the final response, response which stated that the board had reviewed the minutes and no minutes would be released. No, the taxpayers and voters are not entitled to see and understand any of the deliberations that led us here. On May 2, a citizen requested a copy of the purchase and sales agreement that the Selectmen's handout states is in place. He was told that that document was also confidential and being withheld. So let us review. You, the taxpayers and voters, in your capacity as town meeting members with the power and responsibility of the purse, are being asked to appropriate $2.4 million to purchase a 1.3 acre parcel of land and bulldoze the buildings and businesses currently in residence there without viewing the deliberations of your elected officials or the purchase and sale agreement that said vote will bind you to. You are then being asked to appropriate and borrow an appropriate override Prop 2.5 and indeterminate sum to construct a public safety building without benefit of professional engineering documents or soil samples that would refine the actual cost of said construction. As an important element in our local self-government, you would be absolutely irresponsible to vote in favor of this plan at this time, and the arrogance of the Selectmen in thinking that, that you would is breathtaking.
Thirty seconds, Eddie.
I want you to know I have the highest levels of admiration and affection for the Carter and Ricky families and wish them all the best. I consider them good friends. My sister and daughter both worked at the Village and learned important life lessons there. When my wife and I eat out, we eat at the Village and have never had a bad meal. I'm heartsick that we're in this position tonight. And in that context, I can tell you, it's taken more courage to come here tonight and make this speech than it ever did to charge into those burning buildings. And I'm glad that you voted for a secret ballot so that the rest of you don't have to bear the slings and arrows that I'm confident will rain down on me for this little speech. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? I'm going to call for a vote. Now, before we do the vote, the folks over here, I need you to sit. You want to speak?
I was going to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
County Road. I absolutely agree 100% about the, most of what you said, Ed, and that really surprises However, however, I don't like the process of how the numbers came to be, but I differ with you in taking upon, calling upon the people that we, that work so hard on this process, and calling upon all the FinCon, the planning board, and the Selectmen who have researched and spent aching hours. And every, as you as a volunteer, of course, know what it takes. I am going to put my trust in the people that have done the work. I am going to put my trust in the people that I have elected. I am going to put my trust in the fire department, and I am going to put my trust that they're wanting us to do the right thing, and I am supporting this.
Evening. My name's Greg Foster. I live at 1 Liberty Road here in Essex. A little bit about my background. I was the deputy police chief for the largest military community outside the United States. I was also the police chief for the largest, or second-largest military community outside the United States. I have designed communities from scratch with the fire department, and I want everyone to know, I throw my support behind this. This is the ideal location for a fire department to be located. If you want to invest in the community, sometimes you have to take risk. We have elected these people to represent us and to govern this community because we trust them. I know this is often hard to do, but when opportunities present themselves, sometimes you have to take a risk in order to take advantage of them. The third point that I would like to make is, this community has been screwing with this location for a fire department for 10 years. For 10 years, we could have been providing the facilities in which our fire department, personnel who are volunteering for the most part, could be adequately protected against the hazards that we are supporting them up by not providing the facilities and the equipment in order to take care of themselves and protect the family. So in closing, this represents an opportunity in which we will not have perfect information, but this opportunity will flee if we don't take advantage of it.
Hi, I'm Tom Daniel. I live at 27 Pond Street, and this is a really, this is just a question. I'm not sure if it's for finance or the Selectmen or the town administrator. It's really in the weeds. I was hesitant to come up, but I find that I just need to ask it. So in acquiring property under Mass General Law, I know that there's a limit to not paying more than 25% of the assessed value as averaged over three years. And I'm just asking about that in this instance, if there's, how that's been addressed.
What was the question exactly?
So under Mass General Law, there's a limit on what a town or city can pay when acquiring property, that it's limited to no more than 25% above the assessed value as averaged over three years. And I just wanted to understand how, how this...
Greg? Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. The question on the floor is, is there some limitation on the amount above the assessed value that the town can pay for the property? And the answer to that question is, is no. Under Chapter 30B of the General Laws, the town is required to conduct an appraisal to determine the value of the property. However, the town is not limited to paying only that value. Rather, if the town finds that the property is unique or that it's in the public interest, it can pay more than that appraised value. In this particular instance, the purchase price that the town is paying is based on both the value of the real estate and the value of the business. So in my opinion, the General Laws do not place any limitation on the authority of the town to purchase this property at the requested price.
Could I just ask clarification? So if I could ask the speaker again. Through you, Mr. Moderator. So it's under 30B rather than Chapter 10, oh, sorry, Chapter 40, Section 14?
Through you, Ms. Moderator. Chapter 40, Section 14 sets forth the process for which the town can acquire property, but Chapter 30B of the General Laws sets forth the procedural mechanism for determining the value.
Okay. All right, thank you.
One second. Mr. Webber?
Leonard Woodman. I live at 60 Main Street. I'm old. But I have a good memory from things long ago, but I don't remember what I had for breakfast this morning. But I do remember being told that when the water went through in the 40s, I can still remember the pumps in both of my grandparents' houses where we pumped out of a well or system. And I'm sure there was kind of debate about whether we should put water in town. I also remember when we didn't have an ambulance and someone had the idea that we could buy Rockport's ambulance secondhand. And I always assigned a civics project, so I sat in the, up in the balcony of the town hall as a civics project to listen to the debate on that, on that town meeting. And I remember they fought back and forth. It wasn't really a fight because in those days, they beat it up on the, on the town floor, and then they talked about it for the next 364 days. And then I also remember when we were talking about sewerage and being close to the clamming industry, I understood that we needed to clean the town up, and we talked about that for a long time. And then some people got together that actually made it happen. Now, all three of those things could have been in the years that they happened, or they could have been put off, and most of them were, put off and put off and put off. But on all three occasions, years later, everyone, almost everyone, why didn't we do it sooner? We had a choice. We could do it then, or we could have done it before, or we could have waited a little while. But we needed all three. I don't see that we have a choice tonight. I don't see any other options. I know people, know the technicalities of all of that. I've never heard a finance committee in all my years here that is articulate and obviously bright and knowing what they're talking about, and that's in due respect to all of the previous members of the finance committee. But I don't see any option. The option down Northern Avenue is not, is not an option. Destroying a memorial park to our fallen, I don't see that's an option either. So I hope that, I probably won't live to see it, but I hope I don't have to hear for the rest of my life, we should have done it, because it, to me, it's the only option.
Tom Ellsworth, Belcher Street. I move the previous question.
Third second. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
So now we vote. Back to the folks over by the door. I need you to find a seat, please. There's seats up here.
And I need my tellers up here, please.
Yeah, if you got, please, it's in... We're going to be voting by section. Everyone should have a blue ballot card. There's seats here, there's seats here, there's some seats in here. If you guys help, this can go fairly quickly. If you choose not to, people at the door, please find a seat. Again, seats up here, Brian. Up here. What we're going to do? Everyone has a ballot card. All right? Does everyone have a ballot card? When you checked in, you got a ballot card. So everyone has a ballot card. We are going to go by four sections. The back one is one, two, three, four. You're going to come up to the ballot boxes. You're going to give your ballot to the teller. They're going to punch the card, your ballot. You're going to make your vote, put it in the box, and you'll be done. Is that easy enough? Okay, let's take the, are we ready to go?
There's still people standing out in the hall.
If you are out in the hall, I will not allow you to vote. You need to be in this room, sitting down. Please. Don't make this difficult. All right. Okay, can we have the bleachers come forward? There's two vo- Come up. Get your ballot punched, mark your ballot, put it in the box. If you wish, by the way, here's what, I want to make sure that we don't get the ballot box stuffed. Well, you know, there has, stranger things have happened. So if you wish to vote before you come up, you still give your ballot to the teller, have it punched, and then put it in the box. All right? Any questions? Can I have the bleachers first, please? Everyone else, please stay seated. You've got two ballot boxes up here, you've got two ballot boxes here. If you need a writing instrument, they are up here, up front. If you need a writing instrument, they are up here, up front. Are you punching them? After you have finished voting, please return to your seat. Can I have this section now vote with these two ballot boxes? And now can I have this section over here vote with those two ballot boxes? Has everyone voted? Pamela, can you seal those boxes? What we're going to do is, we have accounters already assigned. They're going to go count the votes. What I would ask is, someone move that we consider Article 16, 17, 18, and 19 before Article 15, so we can have the results of the vote back before we consider Article 15. Your second? All those in favor say aye? Article 16, please. Yeah, you may go, as long as this box is sealed.
Article 16. I, David Dome, move the town...
Can we give Mr. Dome our attention, please? Thank you.
I, David Dome, move the town vote to transfer from the vehicles and major equipment staleation fund the sum of $40,000 to purchase... the sum of $40,000 to purchase and equip a police cruiser and to authorize the board of selectmen to dispose of the cruiser being replaced by the purchase or trade. That was 48, but it's 40, not 48.
Is there a second? This is money coming out of stabilization requires two-thirds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Two-thirds vote. Verified. Article 17.
I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,500 to add to the amount appropriated under Article 27 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting for the acquisition from National Grid all of the municipal street lighting fixtures and equipment, municipal flood lighting and area lighting facilities and equipment consisting of luminaries, lamps, ballast, photocells, dedicated poles where applicable, foundations, conduits, dedicated manholes where applicable, and other undercoined equipment where applicable that are not part of an electrical distribution system and the rights thereto, owned by National Grid and located in the Town of Essex and further for the maintenance, repair, and emergency management of such lighting facilities and all costs incidental and related thereto.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Majority. Article 18.
I, Andrew Spinney, move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B to create a stabilization fund for the purchase of maintenance and equipment management of all the municipal street lighting facilities and equipment, lamps, ballast, photocells, dedicated poles where applicable, foundations, conduits, dedicated manholes where applicable, and other underground equipment where applicable that are not part of the electric distribution system and to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,000 to add to said stabilization fund.
Is there a second? This requires two-thirds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? I declare two-thirds. Lisa? We have another motion to take Articles 19, 20, and 21 before? Please.
I move to consider Articles 19, 20, 21, and 23? 22 and 23? How far did you want to go?
19, 20, we got a zoning article. 20, 19, 20, and 21. So move, is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Mr. Burnham.
Wesley Burnham, 22 County Road. I, Wesley Burnham, move that the town devote to amend Section 6-10.2.2.1 of the town's Flood Plain Overly District by law as shown in Article 19 on the warrant.
Is there a second? The town clerk certifies that the proper hearings have been held on this zoning bylaw. Wesley?
In addition, the planning board recommends passage of this article. Basically, it's a housekeeping article where we're correcting or changing the panel numbers for the flood plains to the updated ones and revised letters based on the appeal that we made to FEMA. It also reduces two locations that are listed in that bylaw for where we're going to maintain the maps and leaves them with the board of selectmen and the building inspector.
Any further discussion? Full text is in the warrant. Seeing no further discussion requires two-thirds vote. Thirty-five years I've never seen a zoning article go this fast. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 20.
Paul Rulo, DPW Board, I have three articles, the three following articles are all DPW items. Article 20. I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to retain the services of a consultant to develop a municipal water system facilities plan, including assistance with application for future loan funding.
Is there a second? Paul.
Those $50,000 are for a consultant to review all of the water facilities that we have in town, the distribution system, the water treatment plant, the three wells and the water storage tank. They'll come up with recommendations for improvements and capital projects. Prioritize those items and we'll use that as a basis for an application to Mass DEP for funding through the state revolving loan fund.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 21.
I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from Sewer Enterprise free cash the sum of $23,000, excuse me, $22,300 to purchase and install computer hardware and/or software and/or sewer system alarm upgrades and anything incidental and related thereto for the Sewer Department.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. I'll take a motion to consider Articles 22, 23, and 24 before Article 15. Second? All those in favor? Paul.
Article 22. I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise free cash the sum of $47,126 to purchase and equip a new utility truck for the Water Department.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 23. Mr. Ross.
I, Richard Ross, move that the town appropriate or reserve from fiscal year 2019 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues or available funds, all as specified on the Community Preservation Act Town Meeting Handout. The amounts recommended by Community Preservation Committee for open space reserve, historic resource reserve, community housing reserve, budget reserve, and administration expenses. Did everybody get the handout? There were two projects presented to us this year.
Wait, wait. Can I have a second to this? Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Pamela.
Any discussion? Mr. Ross.
Thank you. Did any, did everybody receive the handout? There were two projects submitted to us this year. It's a total of about $75,000. That leaves about $300,000 in the Community Preservation Fund. So I would encourage anybody, if you have a project, please bring it to the committee. I think one of the most difficult parts on the Community Preservation Committee is actually spending the money, believe it or not. So if you have a project, please bring it to us.
Any further discussion? Jack?
Jack Gale, Pond Street. I don't really know how the Community Preservation Funds work, other than that I contribute to it, but maybe somebody could help and explain. Is there any reason why this money couldn't just be reserved and used for our future fire station?
We'll let Mr. Zabricky answer that question.
The money cannot be used for that purpose. It's not a purpose that's consistent with the Community Preservation Act.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 24.
I, Don Burnham, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 to be added to the Essex Bicentennial Fund.
Is there a second?
I know that we have been asking for $10,000 and I don't want anyone to think that we're getting greedy through some error in bookkeeping. The last year that we voted in $5,000, it did not get put into the account. So that's why there's an extra $5,000 here. The town has already approved it, it just not, has not physically been moved to our account.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. I'll take a motion to consider Article 25, 26, and 27 before Article 15. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Article 25.
I, Benjamin Butrick, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 to be added to the following budget lines in snow and ice budget for the remainder of fiscal year 2018. Snow removal overtime, $3,000, snow removal contractors, $4,000, and snow removal expenses, $8,000.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 26.
I, Richard Ross, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $66,600 to be used to replenish the Finance Committee Reserve Fund for the remainder of fiscal year 2018.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 27.
I, Michelle Dyer, move that Article 27 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. What I'd like to do is call a 10-minute break. Okay, I'll take a motion to consider Article 28 before Article 15. Is there a second? Article 28. All those in favor say aye, I'm moving. Thank you. Opposed? Michelle?
I, Michelle Dyer, move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as most recently amended, to establish the spending limits set forth in Article 28 of the warrant for the revolving funds listed in Town of Essex General Bylaws, Chapter 2, Section 2-26, entitled Revolving Funds. Which funds may be expended without further appropriation for the purposes defined therein, with such expenditure limits to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as Town meeting votes prior to July 1st for the ensuing fiscal year to increase the same, provided however that in accordance with state law, the board of selectmen with the approval of the Finance Committee may increase the limit for that fiscal year only.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Five-minute break. Okay. I've got the vote for Article 14. Total 535 ballots were cast. To reach two-thirds, you needed 353 votes. There were 338 yeses. There was 197 noes and 18 blank ballots. The motion fails. We're going to take Article 15?
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that Article 15 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, I will waive, I will ask for motion to dissolve the meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor? Have a great night.